Good evening, everyone. A call to order the city commission meeting for December 4th. First thing on our agenda would be roll call, please.
Mayor Haynes.
Present.
Commissioner Locke.
Present.
Commissioner Lewis.
Here.
Commissioner Badway.
Here.
And Commissioner Wilkens.
Present.
All right, thank you. In vocation, we have Reverend Wade Graber from First Baptist Church to provide the vocation.
Sorry, I'm going to go to meeting. We're going to pray and run this round.
Take what we get.
Since there's no food to eat, run. I'm praying.
That's right.
Thank you, Lord Jesus, for being here in the room with us, Lord. We bless you and worship you, praise your name. Thank you, God, for your great love for us and for the season that we are celebrating and moving into greater celebrations, Lord, this amazing thing of the incarnation of Christmas, Lord. We thank you for what that means to us personally, what it means to us as family, what it means to us as a community. And, God, we pray that we keep our eyes fixed on you as we walk through our celebrations, and, Lord, that we would really be blessed by your realities of your visitation. And, Lord, we pray just clear leadings as we walk through this meeting tonight and the decisions to be made, things to be considered, determinations to be concluded. Lord, just your grace for the commissioners here as they go through the process of wrapping up a year and kicking off another year. And, Lord, all the extra commitments and details that will entail. Lord, we look forward to your guidance and direction now on all things. Pray your special anointing tonight, Lord, in this gathering, in the Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
God bless.
Thank you. Would you please rise before I pledge allegiance to you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Personal appearance is none. Brings us to public comment. Anyone from the audience wish to address the commission?
Do you guys know what caused the power to go out today in El Dorado? Did you know anything about that?
I don't know anything about that.
I know about it. I don't know why.
Downtown?
Yeah, well, I know the stoplight just over here at Central and Vine, that intersection had its lights out, and also at the office that I work at just over there. So, and it was a couple hours, maybe, an hour and a half, but I was just curious.
I would imagine perhaps when related.
Okay.
I didn't have a report on what caused it.
Okay. I'll just give you this. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the commission? Seeing none, we'll move on to consent agenda. Consent agenda has minutes, appropriations, and other considerations. You have a chance to these minutes were sent out last week in our agenda packet. Do you have any questions or comments on the consent agenda? None, I would entertain a vote.
I move that the consent agenda is presented be approved.
Second. Okay, so we've been seconded. Any further comment? All in favor, say aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Having no old business, move to new business. First thing on our agenda would be the paving of Country Club Road on Columbus 29th.
Yes, bids were received on this project. Engineers estimate for construction was $685,606.50. Pearson Construction submitted the lowest and best bid at $512,256. We're asking you tonight to consider entering in a contract with Pearson Construction for the paving of Country Club Road.
All right. This road project is associated with the construction of the new school. We'll call them Country Club North to 29th Street. Any questions from the commission?
Where's Pearson out of?
Pearson's out of Wichita. They are a general contractor that has done a lot of dirt work, and now they're involving some new ownership and doing paving work and pipe work and all that sorts of stuff.
I just didn't recall seeing any of their bids on any of our pavement projects.
They've been a sub on a lot of our projects.
Okay. And you're comfortable moving forward with that?
Yes, I am, yeah.
Will they be adding streetlights, too?
West Star will.
Well, okay. It's pretty dark up there.
Okay. Any questions or to entertain a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that since Pearson Construction has submitted the lowest and best bid of $512,256 for project number 513, the city manager be directed to award the contract to said contractor providing that the company furnish the proper bonds.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further comment, discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Now that we've approved the work, we probably ought, maybe they should have been in the other, in reverse order. We ought to annex the street?
Yeah, that's true. Speaking with the township, this would be the next thing to officially clean up those boundaries in that area and fully encompass the entire road right of way. Most of it's accomplished with where the trailer park is, that's currently in the city limits. Grandview School is currently in the city limits, and that includes the road right of ways. There's little portions in between, so this just officially gets the entire road right of way.
All right. Any other questions? I would entertain a motion.
What's the ordinance number? Mr. Mayor, I move that ordinance number G-1268 adding to and extending the city limits of the city of El Dorado, Kansas by adding to and enlarging and extending the city limits to include certain territory herein described.
Is that good?
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further question or comment?
Mr. Mayor, this will be a roll call vote.
Yeah, I was looking for that. We don't have roll call anyway.
Yeah, we missed it on the agenda.
Okay, then roll call.
Mayor Haynes.
Yes.
Commissioner Locke.
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis.
Yes.
Commissioner Badway.
Yes.
Commissioner Wilkens.
So this would be the annexation, right? We've got boundary resolution, and then we have annex, extend the city limits, and then boundary resolution.
Yes, so we just annexed the road right of way of Country Club Road. Now we must, this is something we look at annually. Any year that we annex additional lands within our city limits, we must revise our boundary resolution. So the legal description that describes the city limits of the city of El Dorado. Within the last year, you saw the Grandview School site, Toanda Avenues right of way, and just now Country Club Road right of way. So those are the additions to the boundary legal description issue.
Is there a roll call vote also?
No, it's just a resolution.
Thank you.
Resolution number is 2856.
Okay, entertain a motion.
I move that resolution number 2856, resolution redefining the boundary limits in the city of El Dorado, Kansas be adopted.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further comment? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five to zero.
Mr. Mayor, Commission, that resolution will need to be signed by everybody on the commission.
Okay, we have that, it's in this file. Okay. Please sign before you leave.
Yeah, it's only seven pages.
You don't have to sign all seven pages, right?
All seven pages?
No, it's a big resolution.
Okay.
You should have signed the last page.
Okay. Sign all 70 pages. Okay, moving on to item number 15 on our agenda would be end of year write offs.
Mr. Mayor, Commission, each year, the city of El Dorado needs to write off uncollectible accounts. This is a gap function. We don't forget the debt. We just write it off as strictly as an accounting procedure. All of the accounts that are deemed uncollectible will be kept, and they just kind of move places in our software system. So this year, the different fines, which is our court fines, to be removed are $59,372.70. Of that, $5,389.50 is state fees, so those aren't actually our fees to collect anyway, so we're not losing that money. And then the miscellaneous billing amount to be removed is $29,430.30. Last year, this year, our court is down a couple thousand dollars again, so we're doing a better job of collecting that. Our miscellaneous fees are up 15,000 this year, so. Any questions?
It's a housekeeping function, basically, is what we're doing.
Yes.
Okay. Any questions for Tabitha or staff?
The $59,000, that's just court fines?
Court fines and fees, yes.
Speeding tickets.
Speeding tickets, DUIs, everything that we would process through municipal court is included in that. Normally, we actually send, there's actually a larger amount that goes to the state that's a part of that, if you look at past years. But this year, our newer attorneys have been prosecuting more of our local issues, and so the state fines, the state fee portion of that actually went down this year, and our uncollectible portion went up. But if we're able to use the ordinance that you passed a month or so ago and really use those debt collection agencies and set off, we'll be able to recruit more of that.
Okay.
It also includes the $29,430 of miscellaneous, no?
Those are two separate amounts.
Yeah, I was going to say, that's two separate deals.
Oh, I didn't know. You hadn't explained that, so I didn't know.
Yeah, the $29,000 is our miscellaneous fees. That's your mowing, your, we have some refuse amounts that are in there. There's one street cut, and then some other miscellaneous billing.
And the liquid water bills?
No, those don't get written off this way.
Oh, okay. But still $80,000.
Yes.
Yeah. It's a mill.
It's a lot.
It's a mill.
It's a mill.
You said the $29,000 is 15,000 higher this year? Any idea why?
I do. Do you want me to explain, or do you want?
A portion of the funds, and I don't know the exact dollar amount off the top of my head, but a portion of the funds were a, due to an informal agreement that was done a couple years ago between the city and the college with respect to maintaining the fields. Because it was an informal agreement and was not reduced to writing, the parties have agreed not to invoice each other for those amounts. So that's what I believe approximately $10,000 or so of that amount is.
The whole 15 is that.
Oh, the whole 15.
Yeah, what we had billed before we reached the agreement not to collect was about 15,000.
So they owe us 15,000?
But we don't have an agreement?
But we don't have an agreement.
That's correct.
In writing.
Do we now?
No, we do not.
Okay, I was going to say, so what did we learn from this?
Moving forward, everything will be in writing.
Yeah, this was an agreement between, the college had a different president, the city had a different city manager at the time, and because, at that time, the agreement was going to be obviously respected, but then there was a change in both the president of the college and the city manager here at the city, and because it wasn't in writing, either party doesn't know what the terms and conditions of said agreement was. So, yes, moving forward, we would have this reduced to writing and approved by both organizations, but for the time being, we don't have such an agreement writing now, so.
Okay, so change of policy moving forward. Okay. Any other questions or comments? If there are none, I'd entertain a motion.
I move to deem uncollectible the deferred fine accounts in the amount of $59,372.70 for 2017, and miscellaneous billing accounts in the amount of $29,430.30 owed to the city of El Dorado to remove same from the accounts receivable record of the city, and let a list delineating each account be filed in the city clerk's office.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further comment? All in favor, say aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Budget amendment.
So before you is an amendment to the 2017 budget. The published budget, and this is for the refuse fund, the published budget was 1.4, or $1,410,047, and we are recommending amendment of that budget to $1,608,982. The primary reason for this, if you'll recall, earlier this year, the refuse department's, the refuse department had a major malfunction with one of our trash trucks, and the cost of fixing the truck was approximately $10,000, but we had actually planned to replace the vehicle next year as part of the 2018 budget. So at the time, the commission elected to move forward with getting bids for the truck, and so we were able to do that. But our adopted budget for '17 did not include that, because again, we were planning to make that expense in 2018. So what we need to do is amend the 2017 budget to reflect the increase, increased expenses for '17 related to that truck expenditure of about, I believe it's 100, hold on, $198,935. So the way the refuse fund works, we do build up those expenses over several years, and then generally, we pay cash for replacement of refuse vehicles. So we did have a cash balance that allows us to make this purchase, so there will be no need for transferring money or anything like that. But by state law, the budget does have to be amended, because we did not publish a budgeted figure high enough to account for the unplanned expense.
Is that clear to everybody? Without any further question, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the amendment to the 2017 operating budget in the refuse fund as presented.
It's been moved in second. Any further comment, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Item 17 is sale of city-owned property.
The real estate agreement included in the packet is for the sale of two and a half acres. It's currently owned by the city, located, generally speaking, in the approximate location of 1509 Southwest Highway 77. We are selling the property to the adjacent property owner. They desire to, there's kind of a makeshift pond there, they want to make a bigger pond for their property, which benefits us, because the property's not really good for much else for our purposes. And then what we would do is we'd remove some dirt that we would need for general dirt use, if you will, and so that would not be included. But it would give us $11,363 is the purchase price, gives the property owner the two and a half acres that they need for productive use of the property, and we, that's basically the deal. So there's not really any other use for the property other than the upsizing of the pond for the adjacent property owner. So we didn't put this property to bid, per se, but the property owner actually approached us and made the offer, if you will, and I think it's a good offer for both the city and the adjacent property owner, given the status of the property.
Based off of an appraisal by Dave Sanger, I see.
Yep.
This is a piece of property that's just right on the bend, just north of our, the wetlands, if I remember right.
Yes.
Yes.
And a piece of property that's really not, this 2.5 acres is not necessarily buildable in and of itself. At one time, we had maintained access through there, is that correct?
We still do have access.
So we didn't, with this sale, we don't lose our access?
No, the property lines will be along the center line of the access road. There is an agreement between the current owner at the residence and the city of El Dorado, shared access to that property.
Is that listed in this? I didn't see that in the agreement.
You know, that is not, that is something, a separate instrument.
It is a separate instrument?
Yeah, that was, it was done when the home was originally sold.
Okay.
There was an access agreement put in place.
So it would show up in a title search?
What up?
Could show up in a title search, yes.
Yeah. The large barn you see to the west of the residence, the city of El Dorado still owns that, and we utilize that.
I see we're not guaranteeing that the pond holds water.
If you recall, there used to be a pond there years ago, and when we built the wetlands and water reclamation facility, we haul any leftover dirt or topsoil into that and fill that in, and have since mined that material for a number of years to use around various
So are we basically doing this pond?
No more excavation. All we're taking is the embanked material, so the material above the original ground.
Okay.
Well, we've already done. The holes are already there. We're taking away the embanked material.
Taking away the stockpile.
The stockpile, yeah.
Placing.
That's pretty good dirt.
Some of it, yeah.
Yes, and it looks like good, like dirt.
Any other questions from the commission?
So where's the money go to?
It will go in the sewer fund.
It will go in the sewer fund?
Yeah, because it's that property.
You can't, no, you can't put it in your demo fund, or demolition fund?
I think the sewer fund needs it this year, so I would assume.
Good question. Entertain a motion.
I move to authorize the city manager to sign the agreement allowing the purchase of city-owned property of 1509 Southwest Highway 77, given all appropriate terms and conditions are met.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Last item for new business would be the consideration of our December 18th meeting.
Mr. Mayor, Commission, typically, we have canceled the second meeting in December and the first meeting in January each year. Holidays tend to slow business down. This year, we cannot cancel the first meeting in January, because according to the new state law, we have to swear in a new commissioner and see, and that will be Chase's last meeting. So that will happen on the 8th of January. So in December, we believe that we have done all of the business that we need to in a commission meeting at this point, and if we need further, we will let you know.
Can you argue with that?
No.
Okay. If we are, if we are, don't have any business to tend to, I don't have any problem canceling. So I would entertain a motion.
I move that the second city commission meeting in December, Monday, December 18, 2017, be canceled.
It's been moved in second. Any further comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five to zero.
So our first meeting will be January 8?
January 8, 6:30 PM. You, if, I don't know if you remember, last year in December, we changed the code as it pertains to new elections, and when doing that, we also changed that first January meeting so that we would be following state law when we swore people in, so.
And the second meeting until January will be?
It's the third Tuesday, because that third Monday is a holiday, and I, don't quote me on the date, the 16th.
The 16th, okay.
So that will be our first regular meeting. The League of Kansas Municipalities is encouraging us to leave that first meeting to swearing people in and seeing out commissioners that are leaving and not doing a whole lot of business that night. But that's up to you guys.
Okay, why?
Because I think they knew that most of us canceled our first meeting in January, but I don't know, so. That is what they told us last year, so.
So do we have a work session in December?
We do.
We will have one on December 13th.
December 13th?
Yep.
So Wednesday, week from, week from this Wednesday?
Right.
And that's the only one we have?
That's correct.
And on my calendar, we had one coming up this?
And then we're not going to take any action on anything we talk about in the work session till the 16th of January?
There won't be anything that we talk about that will be of pressing matter, no, nothing that can't be delayed, if there's any action at all.
We do have coming up executive session on that same?
Yeah, I'll talk about that in a second.
Okay.
Preview.
We'll move through commission advisory board updates. Do you have any updates you'd like, or comments?
Yes, we had a CTC meeting, lots of notes. It has been decided to disband Oktoberfest because of all the other activities going on at the same time. Lantern Fest has agreed to return again to the lake. The shop local movement that was, I believe, last Saturday. There's a market El Dorado group here in town that did some video ads on Facebook. I believe Chase was in one of them, along with Susie Carson from The Chamber. I believe they're also on the city website and on Channel 7. Molly, over the next six to eight months, is going to be Uh, Molly, over the next six to eight months, is going to be redesigning the website, uh, to make it more user-friendly and more informational. Some of her upcoming projects are the visitor's guide for 2018, South Central Kansas Travel Guide for 2018, she has a really unique idea to put the, uh, El Dorado map on what they call a Z-card, not even gonna try to explain it, it's one of those you have to see to understand, but it's, it's yay big and it's really awesome. Uh, she's going to work on department videos within the city, different departments, do videos on those, uh, looking to increase events at Prairie Trails, get something going out there, and then in May, we will have the National Outdoor Track Championships at BG, uh, Symphony in the Flint Hills, coming back to this area, Bowling with Santa is December sixteenth, and they already did the pet photos at Oerschland's, my son got to be Santa for two hours. He did, he actually did a very good job. Um, think about our coverage. Uh, Airport meets next week, and so does Parks and Rec, two, in two weeks, so that's it. Oh, the parade, the weather was perfect, the parade was good, the mayor and the first lady did an awesome job. Mary Martha Good, bless her heart, obviously an elementary teacher, art, had, there was a whole lot of fun there at the courthouse and in her little car, but the parade was well and, of course, the weather was tremendous.
Really was great, was a great turnout, thanks to everybody who came to that.
That's it.
Well, since we won't be back until next year, I'll just wish everyone Merry Christmas and safe and prosperous and happy New Year.
Before we pass the cookie fair? That already happened.
Cookie fair's over.
All right. Okay, I think all I'll say, just 'cause this'll be my last official, would be, I know we're considering, looking at youth commission, maybe what that looks like moving forward if our partner has resigned from that position, um, all I would encourage is, I do think it's probably a good time to revisit youth commission, what they're doing, and, 'cause they do meet a lot, I mean, they meet as much as we do, as far as public, Monday night meetings, they meet every other Monday night, and so, but I would just encourage that we find something to do with that group, with whatever that looks like moving forward, 'cause I think for a good handful of them, it's pretty important and they are pretty dedicated to it, there's a few that are a little in and out, 'cause they're pretty active, but for a few, it's pretty important, so anyways, I would just make sure we had a conversation with those kids and find a way to keep them engaged for sure, in whatever you guys decide to be moving forward. Okay? That's all.
Great.
The only thing I have to say is the town looks nice, Christmas decorations, done a good job.
Great job to do some public works.
Yeah, thanks for everybody who put that up and worked.
Have you been getting quite a bit of feedback from your letters?
Recycling survey? Yes.
There's been a lot of people talking.
That's good that you're giving.
Good, maybe that's a segue right into, I don't have anything necessarily to report, so segue right into city managers' report.
So I'll just jump into that real quickly, um, we have, uh, received quite a few of our surveys back today, while it's not an official count, we had a stack, uh, that we estimate to be in the neighborhood of, you know, between?
I think between eight, eight hundred and a thousand.
Yeah, I mean, the stack was probably about that big, double stacked, um, so we got quite a few today, and we had a handful come in last week, uh, but then with the weekend and everything, people, I think, finally got in the mail and were able to fill those out and complete those, so we have gotten quite a bit of feedback, we haven't really started tallying it, I mean, I'm sure Brad has started putting it into a spreadsheet, but we don't, I don't have like a, as of now, the, the tally says this, but we'll give you an update on that here pretty soon. Um, but Public Works is gonna do a Facebook Live, uh, they're actually gonna do two of those, and those will provide an opportunity for the public to, to ask questions and, and then for Public Works to then provide some answers, uh, on specifically the recycling program and what, why are we even talking about this, what's the context, and what does it mean, uh, for the community? So those will both be held on December thirteenth at two different times, one will be at nine a.m. and one will be at six thirty P.M.
David, December sixth?
I'm sorry, did I say thirteenth? December sixth, uh, at nine a.m. and six thirty P.M.
Oh, coming up.
So if you, if you or anyone from the public would like to participate in that, just go to www.facebook.com slash El Dorado Pub Works, I'm sorry, yeah, Pub Works, and that'll take you right there to that. So again, that's facebook.com slash El Dorado Pub Work Works, um, and we'll have a couple of, uh, reminders out there as well on our website and Public Works' website, um, to encourage people to do that. And the other thing I believe, uh, that's nice about those is if you, if you don't get to see the live event, it does tape it, um, so to speak, so you can go back and watch it at any time, um, so if you don't, if you aren't able to sit down at either of those two times, you can go back to that website and, um, watch it at your convenience. Um, and then just another reminder, the surveys are due back to City Hall at December fifteenth, so we encourage folks to either complete that and drop it in the mail, and it's self-addressed and self-stamped, so it'll come back to us, or alternatively, you can swing it by City Hall or, um, and, and so we'll take those and aggregate those, you can also drop them up at Public Works as well. Um, a couple other things here real quickly, the, um, Government Finance Officers Association has awarded the Finance Department, um, a certificate of financial achievement for both the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report and our Popular Annual Financial Report, um, so the city puts together two different financial reports, the CAFER, or the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, is the big volume that discusses at, at pretty great length the city's financials, uh, financial statements, so we do that annually, and, um, the city has historically, uh, submitted for a financial achievement award for that document, and we've received it for, well, I believe since the mid-seventies, so we've had a pretty good track record with our CAFER, meeting pretty high financial standards, or financial reporting standards. The PAFER, on the other hand, uh, the Popular Annual Financial Report, this is the very first year that we've, uh, prepared one of those documents and the first year that we've submitted it to the GFOA for review, and so, um, it's very, very good thing that we were a-actually able to accomplish a certificate of financial achievement for that, and again, that document is, I believe it's anywhere between seven and thirteen pages long, but what it attempts to do in as many pages is summarize the volume that is the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, so that the layman can pick it up and get a general understanding of what our financial statements look like, and then obviously, if they want more detail, they can go to the Comprehensive Financial Report. So, uh, we're one for one on that one, submitted it for the first year and, and got that award, so that's obviously a good thing, and we'll continue to do that, uh, moving forward. We did receive some good feedback, so hopefully we can make that document even better, uh, moving forward. As the mayor mentioned, we do have a work session next Wednesday on the thirteenth at four P.M., the topics scheduled for conversation include advisory boards, uh, like debt, and we will have an executive session for non-elected personnel, uh, for the city manager's annual evaluation, so, uh, that'll be on there as well. Um, the police department wanted me to remind everyone that we are seeing an uptick in burglaries, so with the holidays, people are out and about, uh, doing Christmas shopping, if, if you are doing Christmas shopping or you have things of value in your car, make sure that you definitely lock that, but ideally, if you can take those things and deliver them either at your home or office, uh, before taking the next stop, that'll help prevent people from kind of looking in your car and seeing that you have things of value in there. In addition to that, um, as people, uh, begin to put things under the Christmas tree or begin to do additional shopping, make sure you lock your house doors, uh, because people are, again, looking at things of value, and we do know that this is a time when people are acquiring things for gifts, and so people are, are wanting to be more vigilant, if you will, with respect to that. Um, we also had a, a pilot, uh, program that we kinda talked about a few months ago, we had brunch with Santa at Prairie Trails, uh, we had forty-six of the fifty-three people that paid in advance, um, attend that event, so it was well-attended, and Molly showed me some of the input that they received, they had pretty good feedback from folks that did attend that, um, I think one of the great things about that event was the families that came and brought kids felt that they could kind of take their time and, um, kind of meet Santa without having to feel like they were rushed because there's a really long line, so that's one, one thing that we tried out at Prairie Trails, we're gonna, they, they also had a number of suggestions for future events, um, like a St. Patrick's Day kind of festivity, um, so different festivals or, not festivals, but different events, uh, in similar fashion to that, uh, that we can maybe explore and, and, um, see about doing in the future. So all in all, that was a good event, and appreciate, um, all those that were involved, Molly and, um, Tony Yojin and a couple other folks as well, so.
How did the brunch go on Sunday?
That was the brunch on Sunday.
Oh, okay, I was thinking it was two separate events.
Nope, that was the brunch on Sunday.
Okay.
Yeah, no problem. So at this point, that's all I got for now.
Okay. We had originally talked, I think, a little bit about having the recycle discussion on our work session coming up too, are we gonna wait for that discussion to lap this, and I noticed now the survey's due on the fifteenth and it'll be done on the thirteenth, so we're gonna pick up that discussion for recycling in January, I would imagine.
That's correct, uh, we wanted to wait until the survey results were in, so we could aggregate that and provide that as part of that presentation.
Okay. Okay. Any other comments from the commission? If there none, I'd entertain a motion for adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Moved in second to adjourn, any comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries five to zero, we are adjourned. Thank you.